The stuff from the city council meetings over the years, and so I'm going to share those. There's all kinds of neat things. I don't want to, you know, give it away, but it's kind of like the wheel goes around, the same spoke comes up. I mean, what they were talking about back then, we're talking about still. Nine o'clock, Thursday.
Hello. Welcome. You're in the hot seat. So Garland, we are going to just kind of circle around and ask you a series of questions, and I think you have a little over a minute for each answer, maybe a little longer. So, and councillor Mary Day is going to kick that off.
Former councillor Rebecca, welcome. And Labour, what would you consider the most important issues that pose a challenge to the city currently and over the next 10 years?
Next 10 years?
Yes, the challenges that pose the challenge to the city currently and over the next 10 years. So kind of a two-part.
I think one of the challenges right now is, it is just her favorite topic, the homeless issue. And I was talking to Chris out there, one of my daughters, she's dead now, but she got into drugs and alcohol and junk. And she stole thousands of dollars worth of stuff from Darley to foster her drug and stuff like that. And I'm sure these people at these homeless camps are doing the same, had done the same thing. That's why some are living in. And, and we tried everything with her to help her emotionally to take care of herself. And our family provided housing for her so she wouldn't have to end up like these people up here. And it, it's just a case of, it gets to a point where you gotta want it. And, and it's obvious to me that these people up here don't want it. Most of them. And there's some that do, but a lot of them don't. And they're, they're, the other day I was up there and at the post office, and I looked over at that homeless camp, and I thought, God, what a hole. These people, they don't have any, even though they're living the way they're living, they have no respect for themselves, obviously. It's just a dump. And we take out six yards of garbage out of there every week. And there's no reason for it, but this is the way they are. And I know Kristen, she just, if her family, us, wouldn't have taken care of her, why she, she would have ended up the same way, you know? And I think that, and another thing that as far as I'm personally concerned with, with those people coming, I think most of them aren't from here to begin with, and they come, they bring them down from Eugene, somebody does. And I think LTD brings a lot of them down here. And I, and I know that you and Mike does too, their many employer pays into the LTD payroll tax. And I told my son-in-law at the office, I said, I think we should send LTD a bill for all this crap, you know, for bringing these people down here, take them back home to Eugene where there are services. And I realize they're trying to have services around there for them, but they're just, there's not enough around here, I don't think, to take care of. And then they should go back to Eugene and where there are those kinds of services to deal with that kind of stuff. And that's enough ranting about that. But I, I think in the next 10 years, a part of it is just going to be the growth that's bound to happen in the area. And they need to be able to, you know, methodically in an effective way, take care of the expansion of the city to deal with it. And I think this, they should, and I realize the STD things are, everybody complains about it, but I don't think they're any different in any other town than they are here personally. Because I know, I have friends up in Eugene and Springfield and that area that always complain about STDs up there. And
STDs or SDCs?
Pardon?
SDCs.
SDCs.
Yeah. The STD thing, I think that it is an issue, but, but I think there, in the other towns, it's a big issue also. And this is, and I think on some of these things where there's low-income housing going up and different things like that, it can be helped, I guess, through that MuPTI program and different things like that. And I think that's a big thing too, is low-income housing needs to be helped a lot, I think, around here through the MuPTI thing.
Thank you, Garland. Charles?
All right. Thanks for coming in tonight.
I'm sorry about the rant.
You're fine. You're fine. So you've given us some of your background and your application in this discussion. What do you feel are the strengths that you can bring to this council?
Just experience, I guess, of being on the council. And when I, I remember when I'd sit up there at some of the, and Greg knows it too, that some of these meetings, you sit there and you wonder what in the world are these people talking about? You know, the audience, you know, when they testify over different things, oh my God. It's just kind of silly, some of the stuff they're talking about, I personally think. And I think just the experience of being here for as many years as I've been here. And I remember when we first came to this town, you could have shot a cannon from one end to the other and not hit anything. And, and it took, I know with us, it took, I don't know, three or four years for anybody to even say hi, because it was this total logging community. And you got up at four o'clock in the morning and went to work and came home. And I could see that, you know, seeing my own eyes when we came down to this area back in the early seventies. And then I think just the knowledge of how people operate, I guess, is, for me, it helps a lot.
Okay, I have the next question. What role or roles do you think city government should fill?
Well, the government here today is, I, I think they need to be a little more with the council and administration. I think they need to be a little more, just from an outside, and I haven't been to a council meeting in four years, but just what I hear on the news and read about in the paper and listen to him, why I think they need to get along and be a little more willing to work together on different things that I just see where they're not, you know? Where, where it just, to me, it's really disheartening to see some of that stuff that's going on, you know, with the transparency thing of the different agencies. I get it, since I've been on the planning commission, I, I've enjoyed that because I've gotten to know Eric and Fay a lot better. And those are really top, as far as I'm concerned, are top-notch employees for the city, especially Eric, because he's more willing to work with the public. And it's made a huge difference from listening to different people outside.
Thank you, Garland. All right. Could you support an increase in water billing in Cottage Grove if data shows the need for the increase to cover the cost of operating the system?
I don't know. You get, you get, you get it either way you go on that one. But I get a kick out of my water bill, because I bill just under by myself. And my bill was at least a hundred bucks a month. And, but the water bill is probably, you know, maybe a fifth of it, because everything else is all the other junk that goes along with it. And I know that you're just, I, in Reedport, my, some of my family have houses down in that area, down in Reedport area. And they, the city of Reedport and Coos Bay, especially North Bend, they finally, a few years ago, had to realize that they were really behind the eight ball. And they, I forget what they, what kind of a bond they had, it's millions of dollars to cover the cost of a whole new system, water system, put it in, put back down there. And in Reedport, they're just now deciding, oh God, maybe we better do something about it, you know, because they're so far behind on doing things. That's one good thing about Cottage Grove. I remember the years that I was on the council here, we did, and Richard and the city administration did make a lot of improvement. did make a lot of improvements. And it costs money to do that kind of stuff. It's no different than a private business, and it always costs us a lot of money to do that. It costs you a lot for what you do, it costs you money, you know? And there's no way not to make those kind of investments. And people just have to realize that, and I don't think a lot of people do, because they, they're in their own little world. And they, and they just can't, you can't look at it that way. You have to look at the big picture.
Thank you, Garland. What do you feel are the strengths and weaknesses of the current city council? How would you contribute to improving the council?
I don't know if you ever improve it. Maybe you can. But I think my, my biggest, and I, and I think it's, most of it has happened over this homeless joke, is that it was, it just seems like it's so dysfunctional sometimes, that there's just, everybody's against each other's own ideas, you know? And they haven't, just, since this 99 thing has gotten done with and the thing over behind the post offices there, it seems like it's calmed down some. I'm not, I'm sure it's not over, that's for sure. And I think, to me, that's the biggest issue is, is the council needs to be willing to work with each other. When I was on the council, I can remember that we'd get into disagreements about stuff. But after council meeting, I'd always go and shake hands with the person I had a disagreement with, because I just think it's important to create, keep that continuity on the council. Because for no other reason than to show it to the public that you are as strong as one, you know? It's just important, so.
And have you read the budget, the charter, city code?
Read the budget? You know, I'll tell you, I, I hear that crap from my son-in-law, that, do I read the budget? And I, I think I'm the only 80-year-old guy that's probably in debt a couple million bucks, you know? And because we're always buying stuff all the time. But I just, I don't know. It's just, to me, it's just not important to, budgets are important, I'm not saying they're not important, but to me, as long as you're, you have the ability to pay for stuff, you know, the cash flow, you just get it done. It's just all boiled down to it. And as far as, and I, and I can see with having the proper budgeting in the proper places, the money going to the correct things, you know? And, because I remember when Jake was on the council, he was really against doing the pool thing, you know, and spending money on the pool up there to help get that cleaned up and taken care of. But it, it did get done. And it turned out to be a wonderful thing up there. And it's just, but like I said, budgeting is great, but that's just nothing I've ever really been too excited about, to be honest with you. My wife, she used to get mad at me too, paying attention to that. So, anyway.
Thank you, Counselor Mary Day.
Sometimes people are very angry about an issue before the city council. How do you handle people who are angry?
Well, I, I can remember when, when was it, that, that deal out here with, with all the stinky poop?
The bio solids?
Yeah, out there. And I'd, I'd see these, they'd be here just ranting and raving at the council meetings and all that stuff, and I'm like, God. And, and you'd go outside, after the meetings, you'd go out and talk to them, you know? And you'd just shoot the breeze and you'd see them. I'd always, I'd see them at the Buy Mart or Safeway or back in the day, where I'd always stop and talk to them and shake hands with them and say, hi, how you doing, all this stuff, you know? And they'd just totally pee off at you, you know? And, but you just, you just have to maintain a, you know, calm relationship with them. That's all. It's just, you just deal with it. So I know I, I think I still, Mike, I, I, there, people like that are always welcome to, I said I don't do that Twitter and all that junk, but I said they're always welcome to come to my house and knock on my door and come in. And most people, just like, you did that a couple times. And it, I don't know, I just, I just don't carry animosity, you know, about stuff. A lot of people do, I guess.
Counselor Savage?
Thank you, Mayor Salisbury. What do you want to achieve as a city counselor?
I don't know, just help the other, other city counselors and help the city administration achieve whatever goals they're after, and, you know, in a, in a good way. And, and help the community. And I'm not, I'm not the type that's going to go out there and sweep the streets and all that kind of stuff. I had no desire to do that. I hired that done, so I'm not going to do it out here. So that's about it.
Okay, so if you had to choose between closing the library or laying off two police officers, what would you do?
Close the library.
Okay.
Also, I would find the funding to keep the library open, because there are people that, that are willing to, you just have to know the right people, and they're willing to fund different things.
Okay, how do we get more citizens of Cottage Grove involved in the government to ensure it meets their needs and expectations?
That's a good question. I don't, I don't, like I said earlier, people are so into themselves, a lot of people are. And they're so out of touch with reality. And I, the other day I was listening to Cameron and Jim Ness was on, and just a super-nice guy, and I liked him, you know? But they, they got to talking about the downtown corridor, you know, and, and employees and employment and, and they were thinking that the industrial parks, the one, the old one out here by the Chevrolet place and where we're at, that are just kinds of second-class thing. I got that impression from listening to them. And I don't think people realize how many people out where our offices are, are, how many, there's probably at least 100 people that are employed out in that area. And I don't think people realize that. And there's probably, oh, I don't know, 50, 60 employed over there off of Palmer Street in that area out there, you know? And I don't think people realize that kind of stuff. And I, and they're just in their own little world here, you know, in their little six-block area. And I think they need to open their minds a little bit more.
Thank you, Garland. That's all we have time for. We really appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I'd probably wait till the end to talk, but...
Yeah, I would rather wait till the end. Well, we didn't make it through our questions.
Be cordial.
I don't think so either. That's okay. I'd rather hear them.
Except by, priorities by what they talk about and what they do.
You get a good feel.
I just forgot about this thing. It was a good time.
Pretty controversial, too.
It was bad. One of their overpasses.
Yeah.
Oh, man, there's one of them, threatening to come to our homes. And it did smell. Oh my gosh, I went to the site, it was pretty horrendous.
It's not a good thing to be known for.
No. But you can't say we left a mark on the community. I'm sorry, I couldn't resist. Yeah, that was, it is funny, because we fixed it.
You might have kept as humble as the community down there, and it does in fact smell.
Yeah.
Well, and we're actually now going to start treating those bio solids and using them in our parks, which I think is going to be awesome.
I think so, too.
As commissioner, they drained Jimmy Weiss holding on, and oh my gosh, my phone just lit up like a Christmas tree. So I said, well, I'll go out and check it out. And, oh, I mean, I could barely breathe, it was so...
Hello, Mr. Holloman. So Chris, the way we're going to do this is we're going to just rotate around and ask you a question. And we're trying to allow you about a minute to answer, but it's not really working out that way. So if it, if you want to go over, that's okay.
Did Garland warm things up for me?
He warmed it up.
He's awesome.
And so we're going to start with Counselor Mary Day.
Hello, Mayor. What would you consider the most important issues that pose a challenge to the city currently and over the next 10 years?
Well, I think currently the homeless situation is top of mind with everybody and, and hopefully that, that gets, gets better. But I think long-term affordable housing, especially for young families and such, is, I think, really important to keep Cottage Grove as a good community for families. It's really tough, I think, for a lot of people near my age and my age where their kids can't afford to live in Cottage Grove. And so, I mean, my middle son, you know, is in that situation and, and lives in Springfield. And, you know, we'd much rather have the kids and my grandkids, you know, be, be closer. But it's, it's fairly unaffordable here. And there's solutions. I know you've all worked on those solutions with different plans and different ways of attacking that. I think that that's the 10-year thing, Dana, I think is, I think that's, you know, what we should really be looking at. And that's something we have to do ourselves, a lot of the homeless thing is taken out of the hands of locales. But the housing situation that's affordable is something that, you know, we can control as a community and, and we can move forward with that. We can actually do something about that, so.
Thank you. Counselor Savage?
Thank you, Mayor Salisbury. Thank you so much for taking the time to come this evening. You've given us some of your background and your application and within this discussion. What do you feel are the strengths that you can bring to this council?
Well, I've owned, you know, one of my strengths is my family's been here for 140 years and, and I've lived in the city since 1975, but I was born in Sacred Heart in Eugene, we're farmers. And, but, so my adult life, mostly I've operated a small business here for 23 years, the Ford dealership, here in a downtown core, which is pretty rare anymore and kind of going away. But I did that, so I was probably the largest employer in the core of downtown Cottage Grove, had about 30 employees, and we made it work. And then from that, I've managed or been involved in upper management with small businesses up to about, well, the most, about 220 employees, the most I've been in charge of, about $100 million to $130 million a year of budget and income. So I've got a pretty good experience managing organizations and knowing how they run, knowing about the do's and don'ts. I'm pretty up to speed legally with that, because you just have to spend a lot of time with council when you're operating a fairly large organization. It's, it's important. So I've got a pretty good dose of reality on, on that. And I think that the main thing is, and why I've been hired, I'm a pretty inquisitive person, so I like to ask a lot of questions. And I'd like to know, you know, why do we always do things a certain way? Is there a better way? You know, I like brainstorming and that sort of thing. So I think that bringing that business management experience would be a good thing. And it's, it can be fun. It doesn't have to be all that serious. I think that you get people to open up and start thinking outside the box, that's where you'll find some really good solutions that work.
Thank you. Counselor Flack?
Thank you. What role or roles do you think city government should fill?
Well, basically, the city government should have a total ear to the ground, to the voters, to the citizens, and they need to lead. And I think that Cottage Grove's always done a pretty good job of that. I mean, so I grew up where one of my dad's best friends was a guy named Bill Whitman, who was involved in the city for a long, long time. So I, you know, grew up with him, hanging around him and all that. Actually, when he was between work, I hired him at the dealership, and he sold cars with me. And we had a blast together, really. And so, you know, the, the city council needs to, you know, look for solutions, examine best practices, what other communities of size, similar, what they're doing that works for them, that sort of thing. I think that Cottage Grove's always done a pretty darn good job of it myself. But there's challenges, like the housing situation, we all know, affordable housing is huge. The homeless situation, you know, there's a lot of constraints put on by federal and state, you have to work your way through that. So no easy solutions. It's, it's work, I think, being on the city council, it's work. Just have to be prepared for that.
Thank you. Could you support an increase in water billing in Cottage Grove if data shows the need for an increase to cover the cost of the operating system?
Well, sure, it has to be funded. But I think that it's also a responsibility of the city and the elected officials to look at ways to make it as sufficient as possible, you know? I know there's a lot of plans right now for things, doing some things internally that were outsourced, so that's awesome. I think that's a great deal. So, you know, it, it has to be self-sustaining. You know, you, you can't, you can't go backwards. I mean, it's, you know, do you not want sewer? I mean, that's a pretty tough situation. So, and so I like the ideas of outsourcing that I've heard about here at the city council meeting, some of those things. And I think, you know, just looking real hard at things and making sure that they're doing best practices and such is, you know, the inquisitive about that, too.
Thank you. Counselor Stenin?
Thank you. What do you feel are the strengths and weaknesses of the current city council? And how would you contribute to improving the council?
Well, you know, I don't, I don't know all of you that well, so it's hard, you know, for me to judge strengths and weaknesses. It'd be kind of arrogant, really, being, you know, honestly uninformed. So it's hard to answer that. I think that, I think I would bring the, the mind of the small business person into the city council, you know, because that's what I've mostly done. So I have the eyes and the mentality of that. And I, and I think we really have to support the small businesses, especially down here in the core of the city, in the historic area of the city. And so I think that, you know, bringing that forward would be good. And then I, I think the general civility of the city council that I've seen to each other, even when there's a disagreement, is, is a huge strength. You know, I don't see the animosity and, you know, you watch the nightly news and you see some of these... and you see some of these school board meetings and city council meetings and it's, it's pretty obnoxious, really. Are they really moving things forward or just going after each other? I mean, this needs to be a solution-based entity for the people that, that all of you represent.
Thank you. Councilor Irvin.
And have you read the budget and the charter and the city code?
You know, I really have, just bits and pieces of it. And I've been on budget committee a short while years ago. But I'm real familiar with budgets and financial statements. In fact, that's always been a strength, is finding things in budgets and financials. That's one of the reasons Ford Motor Company has pushed me on various dealerships through the years to help them, to help fix these entities, is that I'm pretty good with a budget and a financial statement. And I'm a pretty good efficiency expert, as far as that goes, in larger organizations. But it's all from observance. So as far as the finite details, the city charter, I'm just basically familiar with it. And as far as all the ordinances and rules, you know, not so much as what I've heard through the years from the city and/or council meetings or general discussions. So, but, you know, if I would be on the city council, of course, you know, I'd want copies of all of that so I could study it because I'm kind of OCD about those things, so.
Councilor Mary Day.
Sometimes people are very angry about an issue before the city council. How do you handle people who are angry?
Well, I think the first thing in de-escalate, de-escalation is to listen. I think a lot of people are angry because they don't feel that they're heard or understood. So I think listening is good and then following up with questions about their specific grievance so that they can bring it down to a finer point or a workable situation. And I'm pretty skilled with de-escalation and that sort of thing. Part of that's dealing with customer services and industries. You know, the, what we call the heater, the hot topic, the unhappy customer always ends up at the top. And, you know, you have to deal with that in an ethical and proactive way.
What do you want to achieve as a city councillor?
Well, I think just be a good city councillor to the constituents and help the city. I mean, I love the city. I've lived here all my adult life and I own property right downtown and I live right downtown, two blocks off Main Street. So the city's pretty important to me. And, you know, I'd like to give back to the city. I think, I think I could offer some thoughts and insights. And like I said, I'm pretty inquisitive and, you know, I think I could support all the members of the city council and looking at things maybe differently, different eyes, different ways, different directions. And maybe my small business experience could, you know, come into play with some of this. And I also firmly believe we need some mid-sized business, not the five to 15 employees. We need some businesses here in our area that are employing 50, 60, 70 people with good, good living wage-paying jobs and that sort of thing. If we could attract a couple of those, I think it'd keep the younger families and our children and grandchildren living in this community and employed here, if we could find a way to do that.
Thank you.
If you had to choose between closing the library or laying off two police officers, what would you do?
I don't believe in a zero-sum game. And I think, I think that's just an impossibility. The library is kind of always, always in most cities, kind of a hub, a center, a refuge besides a educational facility. So there's always a way to keep the library running with donations, even if there's not enough city budget. Then you go for, like a lot of communities, donations, endowments, get funding, get volunteers, make it run. Would you shut down the water department? And what do you choose, fresh water or sewage? You know, you can only afford so much, one or the other. I don't think so. You have to have both. So you have to have both fresh water and sewage. You have to have a library.
Thank you.
How do we get more citizens of Cottage Grove involved in their government to ensure it meets their needs and expectations?
Well, I think it's, I think it's really good that you can electronically watch a city council meeting. But I don't know how many people really know that. I didn't know that, you know, until just a few months ago. So I think maybe the city needs to do a better marketing job on the fact that this is available to the, to the citizens, that they can view this, their councillors, the people they elected in action. So I think that's one thing. And I believe in town hall meetings. Maybe they can get a little rowdy or a little rambunctious at some time. But I think they diffuse tension and they make people feel welcome and heard. So I think town hall meetings on a regular basis is a good deal. And maybe there should be open houses. It's occasionally, once or twice a year at City Hall, open house where people could come in. I mean, you could have some kind of refreshment or something and various people from different departments could invite people in and say, this is what we do, this is how we do it, so that the citizens get a better understanding of what really goes on here. Because if they're not, say, a businessperson applying for a permit, most people don't know what's in this building. I mean, I have because I was here when it got built, but, you know, but most don't. And so that unfamiliar situation can be remedied. And then it'll be healthier. And then I think the citizens will be more supportive of what the city's doing. It's all about communication and, you know, it just is. It is. We need, I think we need to get citizens more connected with, with the city, really.
Thank you, Mr. Holloman. We really appreciate you coming out.
All right. Thank you.
Welcome. Hi there. Alex, could you say your last name for me?
Drea.
Drea. Welcome.
Hello. Thank you for having me.
What we're going to do is we're going to ask you a series of questions and we'll take one from each councillor and just rotate around. And we'll start with Councilor Mary Day.
Hi and welcome. What would you consider the most important issues that pose a challenge to the city currently and over the next 10 years?
Thank you, Councilor Mary Day, Mayor Salisbury. In chronological order, then coming ahead of us in the next 10 years, we have the Main Street revitalization. Thankfully, the city was able to secure an EDA grant. But revitalizing our downtown area is very important to increase tourism, to help our small businesses that are really struggling to recover from COVID-19. Of course, you are familiar with the crisis that is homelessness. The governor declared a state of emergency related to homelessness. And with that, she has opened up $40 million for reappropriation. And that is a huge issue for our community. Councilor Savage and I believe Councilor Mary Day, you were meeting with our elected officials in Salem last week to make sure that our voice is heard at the legislature. Homelessness and how we fund, the way that we address homelessness is a very important issue moving forward. In particular, I appreciate your leadership, being at the table, to let the state know that the city of Cottage Grove has met its legal and ethical obligations to address homelessness and make sure people aren't freezing on the streets on nights like tonight and last night. But at the same time, we have bills to pay. And if there's $40 million being re-appropriated, Lane County and the city of Cottage Grove has some bills to cover. The other things that, what keeps me up at night, and I think Councilor Mary Day and I share this concern, is the prospect of a cascade of subduction event. So a large, the big one, a large-scale earthquake. And my husband says I worry too much, but thinking about things and planning ahead, running through scenarios, that's how I calm myself, as well as stockpiling those freeze-dried meals that are, have a shelf life of 50 years and you just add water. So our garage has a lot of those. But it's going to take our community working together and knowing our neighbors in the event that that, something like that happens. While we're on the I-5 corridor and that's a lifeline route, it's important to know your neighbors and be prepared before an event like that. So those are just some of the challenges that are coming to our city in the next 10 years.
Thank you. Councilor Savage.
Thank you, Mayor Salisbury. And thank you so much for taking the time to come out this evening. You've given us some of your background and your application and throughout this discussion. What do you feel are the strengths that you can bring to this council?
Well, I, my knowledge of local government, I work for a local government, Lane County. I follow the public policy landscape from the federal level down. So in particular, by the, because of the nature of my job, I'm often the first to know of funding opportunities that are coming down the pipeline. I know that some of those are specifically only for rural cities to apply. And there are some public policies that cities need to have in place in order to be eligible for competitive grants at the federal level. So I'm often privy to that because that's the nature of my professional role. The other strengths would be my community-building skills. I served in the United States Peace Corps in Azerbaijan. I served for three years. A typical service is two, but I extended my service because I wasn't done getting the job done. Azerbaijan is north of Iran, south of Russia, on the Caspian Sea. It's a secular Muslim republic. And they, they have a currently dictatorship where the, the current, they say it doesn't matter who you put in the ballot box because Ilham Aliyev will pop out. He made his wife the vice president and then they lowered the age for, to be president to just the age that his youngest son is, which is one of the reasons I'm running, is to show, have an example for my students in Azerbaijan that if you're qualified, you can get a job in leadership in America. But my community-building skills really were shaped during my time in Azerbaijan. I was often the only American, the first and maybe the last American someone had ever met. And just being there as a single young woman telling people I was, I'm not married. I, sometimes peace corps volunteers pretend to be married because you fend off proposals that way. But I didn't do that. And I would tell people, my parents support me being here. I'm a woman working abroad. And sometimes just my presence was setting an example that there could be more out there for you. And of course, in Azerbaijan, if you wanted to do anything, you needed to do it yourself. The government wasn't going to help you. There weren't systems in place. It was very DIY. And actually, that's what I appreciate most about this community. I'm on the Be Your Best Coalition, which just got their 501(c)(3) nonprofit status. Very proud of them. As a group, we promote community networking, bringing people together and grants into this community for the health of our children and families. And every person in that group knows we're just going to do it ourselves. If it doesn't exist, we're going to do it. And I would use this platform to elevate my community-building skills.
Thank you.
Thank you. So next question. What role or roles do you think city government should fill?
I work for a local government, so I know how important it is to be a steward of public resources. At its best, government can do what households alone, what churches, nonprofits cannot do, pave roads, staff a law enforcement, a community center, a library, and respond to emergency disasters, as well as have a functioning water and wastewater system. As someone who works in Lane County across our entire geography, I know that other cities really look to the city of Cottage Grove. What are you doing? People look up to us because we're doing something right. And I would like to be a part of that. The role of government is to make other people's jobs easier. So if you're a small business owner, it's to help support and invite economic development and tourism to our region. My daughter was born in 2020. And when I took her home from the hospital, it was raining ash. I am very concerned about how wildfire seasons are affecting our community's health, especially the health of young folks as well as our retired folks. Retired people honestly keep a lot of the things we love about this community going, like the Cottage Grove Carousel, the Swinging Bridge. I'm not saying only retired people worked on those things, but a lot of volunteer labor comes from people who have retired. And I'm really concerned about their health. And I think we, we saw how vulnerable our systems were, especially nonprofits who rely on a volunteer labor force to do the work they do, when we lost that during COVID-19, when it was not safe for people to be out in congregate spaces.
Thank you. Could you support an increase in water billing in Cottage Grove if data shows the need for increase to cover the cost of the operating system?
Thank you, Mayor Salisbury. I didn't bring my copy of the Secretary of State, Shamiya Fagan's recent advisory about Oregon's water systems. But I'm recently become very concerned about our water systems. In all of Oregon, in particular Lane County, the city of Cottage Grove is doing a really good job. And I understand that investment in water and wastewater, it takes money. As a grant professional, I would seek additional revenue sources before we have to increase the bill, of course. It, it's shocking and it hurts. Even when I open my bills, I get quite a bit of heartburn. But at the same time, we do not want to be like Mapleton, where they're on and off a boil water notice. And, or like other smaller cities that I won't name, that if they're, if you're not in compliance with the EPA, you will not be able to build additional housing anymore. And you could be in a housing moratorium for 10 years. That's an issue we're talking to another local government about. So if we have to increase the price, what's more important than water? We can't live here without water. And I would seek ways to help people who cannot make those payments, who cannot afford it. There's energy assistance programs out there. And I would try to also elevate this issue to the state because the Secretary of State just issued this report on how fragile our water systems are and disjointed. I hope that what that means is they're paving the way to give us some help.
Thank you. Counselor Senate.
Thank you. What do you feel are the strengths and weaknesses of the current city council? How would you contribute to improving the council?
That is a good question. Well, the strength, of course, the greatest asset are our people. We have representation from different experiences, walks of life, businesses. I really appreciate Mayor Solzby's perspective as a small business owner and your perspective on bringing tourism into the community. For example, I think last year you mentioned, we're on the winery tour. Why don't we entice vineyards to have tasting rooms downtown? And I think I will meet you there when those are here. I love it. And it's ideas like that that will continue to spur economic development. I, the, the weakness is you've got a vacancy, and I think that chair has my name on it. Also a strength, you have a youth representative. That's really amazing. Working for Lane County, I was the main staff person who applied for the Youth Homeless Demonstration Program Grant three times, third time's the charm, just keep going. And we were finally awarded that grant, which creates ongoing funding for youth homeless services in Lane County. And that was, I won't take all the credit for that. We had a youth advisory council who wrote the bulk of that. But I think it's really great that you have that representation and other places do not.
Thank you.
And have you read the budget and the charter and the city code?
Counselor Irvin, thank you. Yes, I have. I've also read your emergency operations plan and your housing needs analysis. And I read those things before I even thought about applying for this because I'm a policy geek at heart. And I live here and I'm like, I want to know these things, especially as I've mentioned, emergency preparedness is what keeps me up at night.
Counselor Mary Day.
Sometimes people are very angry about an issue before the city council. How do you handle people who are angry?
Are you talking about my family right now? I, well, with humor, that's how I do it. And, you know, I think when people, anger is just an expression of caring deeply. So I'm going to listen and understand you're, you're coming from a place where you care really deeply about this. That's why I am interested in serving my community like all of you and dedicating my volunteer time because I care deeply, just like you do. So I would listen, talk through, give the information I have. I'm happy to meet in, I mean, if it's safe, if it's like threatening, you know, call my neighbor who's the former chief of police. But yeah, I would just listen and talk through. I want to hear what people have to say, and I very much doubt it's all like rosy. It's usual, even just saying I'm applying, I've already had residents coming to talk to me. And it's not like, you know what, we're doing such a great job. Thank you. This is wonderful. It's all like, we need to do this, this, and this. And I'm just adding it to my to-do list.
Counselor Savage.
Thank you, Mayor Solzby. What do you want to achieve as a city counselor?
I want to use this platform to build community. And what that means is bringing people back together. One of the greatest assets in the city is our people. Just look at this process. We had seven people and one dog apply to serve our community. But we have been disjointed by force because of the travesty that was COVID-19. And we are still recovering. Repeat the question. To make sure I get it all.
Yeah, the question was, what do you want to achieve as a city council?
What do I want to, yes, I, I remember where I was going with that. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Savage. I want to use this platform to bring people together, especially post-COVID-19 and in a world where you're in your screen and you're not talking to each other. You get really isolated and it can feel like people are your enemy. But really, the way I approach things is as I am a perpetual optimist, but also focused on solutions. So I think we are all here to row in the same direction, at least in the same river. And I don't care if your oar has a elephant sticker or a donkey sticker or a unicorn sticker on it, like we, or you have a paddle or whatever you're using, let's row in the same direction. So I would, what I would hope to achieve is that more people in the community would understand the good work that the city is doing and be engaged and a part of it as well. Because it's not just us sitting up here and making decisions and policy in a void. It's going to take everyone working together.
Thank you. We really appreciate you coming out.
Thank you for your time.
Hello, Mr. Rust. Welcome. That's your hot seat. So the way we're doing this this evening is we are rotating around the room and each counselor will ask you one question at a time. And we're allowing about one minute, but feel free to go over it if you need to. Everyone else has been doing that. So we'll start with Counselor Mary Day.
Good evening.
Good evening.
What do you consider the most important issues that pose a challenge to the city council currently and over the next 10 years? Or the city, actually, I'm sorry, I misread that. Challenge to the city currently and over the next 10 years?
Currently, I would say the police department would be number one. We need to get that straightened out. Number two would be paving the roads. I think with electrical cars coming in, our gas tax is probably going to go down. And our city streets are still going to need to be paved, and oil's only going up. So we need to figure out a way to finance that. And that's going to be, like you said, 10-year. It's going to be, as these cars all become electric, we're going to need to find a way to pave these streets.
Thank you, Counselor Savage.
Thank you, Mayor Solzby, and thank you, Mr. Rust, for coming out this evening. You've given us some of your background in your application and in this discussion. What do you feel are your strengths that you can bring to this council?
Well, I've got some pretty good business experience and 13 years of law enforcement that I think might help the city at this point, or I hope it would. And I've done a lot of different things. And I've donated a lot of my time to the city and county that I lived in.
Thank you. Counselor Black.
Thank you. Excuse me. What role or roles do you think city government should fill?
I think we should, number one, take care of the citizens. That would be safety, water, sewer, all the necessities. And then look towards the future. And I'm not sure what that future is going to be as far as housing. But we need to do something to make it more affordable to live. And I don't know if that's, I don't think it's necessarily raising the minimum wage or whatever. But we have to do something where people can live. And I think the, the way that the economy is going, it, it's going to take all of us to figure that out. I, I really don't have an answer to what we can, what we can do to put people back in basic housing. A lot of people are working two jobs now.
Thank you. Could you support an increase in water billing in Cottage Grove if the data shows the need for the increase to cover the cost of the operating system?
We'd have to. We have to provide water and sewer. I know that that's a really touchy subject. It's going to have to be explained, and it would take everyone on the council to be able to have the same explanation of why it needed to be increased. But everything's going up. Inflation is terrible. And this city, I, I've seen our facilities and they are very nice. You guys have done a wonderful job, in my opinion. City manager, back when I got on the budget committee, took me everywhere. And I'm, I was impressed back then. But I understand there's more to do.
Counselor Senate.
Thank you. What do you feel are the strengths and weaknesses of the current city council? And how would you contribute to improving the council?
I guess I work well with people. I work well with a lot of different personalities. I kind of enjoy it, actually. And there's a lot of hard decisions that are going to need to be made. And I know this term would be up in two years. So in the next two years, with the downtown going on and everything that you guys have going already, we're just going to have to all work together. And I'm not sure I'm answering your question, but I hope I am. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Counselor Irvin.
And have you read the budget and the charter and the city code?
I have. I, this is my second term on the budget committee. And I have, sir.
Counselor Mary Day.
Sometimes people can get very angry with, about an issue before a city council. How do you handle people who are angry?
I think my law enforcement abilities can come in there because you just have to let it. You have to listen, always listen, and you can't take it personal. You're, I know you're not paid, but you have a big position in the city and people really depend on you. And there are people on each side of every issue. And you have to listen and then make the best decision you can. And some people are going to be frustrated with you, and some are going to be extremely happy. It's just the way it works.
Counselor Savage.
Thank you, Mayor Solzby. What do you want to achieve as a city counselor?
Wow, I just want the city to thrive. I want to be a communicator. I think, I think we can express our needs and our wants better as a, as maybe as a council than's been done in the past. We have to listen. And I think you guys do a pretty good job of that. I've been in a lot of city council meetings. And I think we just need to keep doing that. But again, we have so many issues with the downtown that we don't even know what we're going to run into yet. And that's the exciting part of it. But we have to listen to everybody that has any idea about what would work because you never know for sure which idea is the best. Do you hear it?
Counselor Black.
Thank you. If you had to choose between closing the library or laying off two police officers, what would you do?
It's a no-brainer. I'd close the library. That can be, that can be online. A lot of that information. And at this point, we can't lose two more officers.
Thank you. How do we get more citizens of Cottage Grove involved in their government to ensure it meets their needs and expectations?
Well, I think we're going to need a bigger meeting room if we get any more people involved. The city council meetings tend to be quite full at this point right now. But how do we get more? I think you have to have a dream. And I think the dream is the city. And what you are going to be doing with the downtown is going to be incredible and last maybe 100 years. And we have to let the city know that they need to be involved in that. How do we do that? I think the paper, Cameron, you know, it's a radio station. And I think we could even bring TV stations from Eugene in. What you're going to be doing is going to be remarkable. What city refaces themselves? I've never heard of it. And that's your, that's your challenge. It's a big one. Get the citizens involved.
Over the next decade, how would you describe the demographic and culture you would like to see represent Cottage Grove?
I really don't have an answer to that because I don't have anything to do with how this area grows other than being part of it. So, you know, we, I grew up in Eugene, I grew up in Roseburg. We're right in the middle, kind of. How are we going to grow? Who, who is going to move here? What businesses are going to be coming in? I don't know. But it's up to you to decide what businesses come in and how much we grow.
And why do you think that you're competent to be a city counselor here?
I am willing to put the time in and I'm willing to learn. Nobody's going to sit in that seat right there and know what's going on. It's going to take a little bit of time to get up on the things that you know. And, but I'm willing to do that. I have, I have the time and I have the will. And I'm willing to do what's needed to be done. Really any harder than that.
Thank you. Counselor Mary Day.
Summarize your priorities for the city for the present and particularly for the future.
I would like to see our hospital grow. I think when you have, and my dad was a hospital administrator, so when you have a hospital that takes, it has the capability of really taking care of a community, that community grows. It's like having a good airport. It takes both of those. That's what business looks at. It's what I looked at when I had business. How can I grow? How can I get in there? And who's going to take care of my employees? And if the infrastructure is already in, which you already have a business park, we don't have much of an airport. But we do have a hospital that has plenty of room to grow. And I think as that grows, as the infrastructure like that grows, there's a lot of businesses that come in that see a real opportunity to have a, a good school system, which we have, and for their employees to have a good life.
Thank you. Counselor Savage.
Thank you, Mayor Solzby. This is a two-part question. Do you think our Main Street and downtown is healthy and successful? Yes or no? And B, what suggestions would you make to help increase its vitality?
I think it's successful in the summertime. I'm not sure it's successful in the winter. What would I do different is exactly what the challenge is for y'all redoing the city. I think that is such an opportunity. And if we can keep our heritage and, uh, I watched Animal House the other night and it was just fun to see all the old sod during the parade of Cottage Grove. If we can, if we can change our city and still keep it historic, keep our schools the way they are, um, I think, uh, I think we have a really good chance to grow and not grow hundreds of thousands of people, but bring in different businesses other than lumber or I-5 traffic.
Thank you. Based on your experiences or general awareness of the city, what do you consider to be the strengths and challenges for the city?
The strengths of the people in a diverse group we have. I think we need to fight the no-growth maybe a little bit because you can't stop growth. You just, you can't. It's very frustrating if you don't want any growth at all, zero growth, because it's just gonna happen. The better you make your community, the more people wanna live there. When their children get educated, they wanna live here. They don't wanna be in Eugene. I went through that school system. Went really good when I went and I'm old and so it finally hasn't gotten much better. But, um, this is a place, I mean, I, when I retired, I moved 1,300 miles to come back here and, uh, bought an old house that was inhappable and redid it and I'm still having fun. It's a remarkable place.
It really is. Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to come out tonight.
Will they have me? Are we done?
You're done.
Have a good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Moore. That's your hot seat, right there. I said, that's your hot seat.
Okay.
So the way we're doing this this evening is we're going around and each councillor will take a turn asking you a question and we'll just continue for as long as the time. And we say a minute per question, but feel free to take longer if you'd like.
Okay. Can I get a glass of water?
Mindy will get you one.
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and start with Counselor Mary Day.
What do you consider the most important issues that pose a challenge to the city currently and over the next 10 years?
Uh, I would say city infrastructure, um, policing, especially in light of what's been happening lately around the nation. How many I-ops do I, one?
As many as you feel.
I think the hot ticket right now is policing.
Counselor Savage.
Thank you, Mayor Salisbury, and thank you, Mr. Moore, for coming out tonight. You've given us some of your background in your application and throughout this discussion. What do you feel are the strengths that you can bring to this council?
Having worked with the, the city of Crestwell when I owned a, a business down there, I think that teamwork is probably one of the big things that I bring. I mean, we survived, uh, this in my opinion anyway, it was a pretty terrible thing and without teamwork between my staff and, thank you very much. And actually, if it wasn't city staff, I mean, we couldn't, we couldn't have got where we ended up being. So we stayed on the airport. So I think teamwork's a, a big thing.
Counselor Flack.
Thank you. What role or roles do you think city government should fill?
Well, the city has to operate, so the city has a lot of staff. It would be, I think, a neat thing for the city to, you know, maybe look at the public works department or the accounting department or something like that. And if somebody needs a little bit extra education in a certain area, you know, make a deal with them that we can send them to a, a trade school or a, uh, an accounting school or something along those lines, as long as they've kinda been thinking about this a little bit. They have an agreement that we get to keep them for the next four or five years, you know, and so we just don't train them up and all of a sudden they take off. So I think that anything that we can do to upgrade the quality of the people that we have working for the city, I think it just makes the city a much better place and it works more efficiently and costs us less money in the long run.
Thank you. Could you support an increase in water billing in Cottage Grove if the data shows the need for the increase to cover the cost of the operating system?
Can you repeat that again? I don't hear it very well, so I can turn my, you have a loop here? Yeah, let me turn that thing on so that might help a little.
Oh, we need to turn it on. Mindy's gonna do that.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you. I'm sorry, I should've mentioned that off the bat.
It's on.
Oh, it is on.
Okay. Let me know when you're ready.
Tea coil, public tea coil. Okay, great, that sounds a lot better.
Could you support an increase in water billing in Cottage Grove if data shows the need for the increase to cover the cost of the operating system?
Short-term, I think that I could, but I think, and all I, all I know is from when I was in Crestwell and what they did with their system down there. Instead of paying the note off in 30 years, they decided to pay it off in 15 years for whatever reason. Costs the city less money, I guess. But really, I don't think your consumers, you know, your customers necessarily care about that that much. Some of us are older, you know, we're not gonna be here in 15 years anyway or, or 30, so it really doesn't make any difference to us. I think the water rates are pretty high, but it's gotta pencil out. So I think going down that step, we need to make sure that whatever we're putting in, you know, isn't frivolous, um, you know, it's mandated, mandated by the federal government, water quality and all that kinda stuff. So kind of in a short-term way, I would, I would say yes, but I would kinda try and hold the rates down as low as you could.
Thank you.
As a consumer.
Counselor Sennett.
What do you feel are the strengths and weaknesses of the current city council? How would you contribute to improving the council?
I don't know that much about the council. I know several people that are on the council individually and I know their strengths, but I've never seen the system work before, so I don't know. It's a tough question to ask. There was a second part to that.
How would you contribute to improving the council?
With the willingness to work together, um, I'm not necessarily a rubber stamp, uh, but once the council decides and makes a decision on a direction to go or what we're gonna do or what we're gonna spend, I'll be a team player on that part, so.
Thank you. Counselor Irvin.
And have you read the budget and the city charter and the city code?
I have not. So no, I haven't.
Counselor Mary Day.
Sometimes people are very angry about an issue before the city council. How do you handle people who are angry?
I went through an anger, I don't know whether I should be telling this or not. I went, I went through an anger management thing a, a number of years ago and it was the best thing that I ever did for me. And it had, it, it has helped me in, you know, since I took, did that thing. And, um, I think that I can help diffuse the rhetoric and, you know, and ask the person just to take a few minutes and they, let's step outside for a second. Calm down. Get your thoughts together. Take a deep breath and walk back in and let's continue the discussion. I guess if, if that's what you would allow them to do, but I think just giving them some time to decompress is a big deal.
Counselor Savage.
Thank you so much, Mayor Salisbury. What do you want to achieve as a city councillor?
I don't know, peace and love and all that good stuff, but, uh, just to be a good councillor for the city of Cottage Grove, um, I would like to see the city maybe be involved with the airport a little bit more than it is. I know that it's a state-run airport, but, um, you know, that, that's a really kind of a, I'm a pilot and flyer and all that kinda stuff. And so I see it kind of as a sleeping giant that the city could tap and use, um, you know, bring people in. They used to have, um, big fly-ins out there, um, the Sturman flying, I mean, you know, they'd have 40 or 50 airplanes and those people had to stay someplace. And of course, that's just over one weekend of a year, but, uh, to maybe develop a STEM program for the kids in the high school. I know that Crestwell does that. I keep bringing that place up, but Crestwell has a STEM program out at its city airport. You know, not everybody is gonna be a lawyer and a doctor and all that kinda stuff. And if they have an interest in that kinda thing, I mean, why not train them that way?
Thank you. If you had to choose between closing the library or laying off two police officers, what would you do?
You're short, you're short-staffed as it is, right? Police officers, right? I mean, I would like to see the library stay open, maybe on limited time, you know, part-time. But I think the library is an important part of it, a town. Not only is it a gathering place and, but, and it's not necessarily a warming center or that kinda stuff, but, you know, kids need, excuse me, kids need, you know, something like that. I don't have an answer for you on that question.
Thank you.
They're both important.
How do we get more citizens of Cottage Grove involved in their government to ensure it meets their needs and expectations?
I would think that the more information that you put out, um, send a, you have a water bill, you could put something in the water bill. You know, this is what's coming up next month with the city. If you're interested, come on down, wanna talk about it. I mean, that pretty much reaches everybody in town one way or the other. A reader board out in front, I don't know if you have one. Do you have one here? A reader board out in front? Oh, okay. But I mean, something out in front of the city hall or some other prominent place in town. Just getting the word out, word of mouth, you know, and get, um, I don't know, just to get the word out. I would, I would try and get the word out as much as I could.
Thank you. Counselor Sennett.
Over the next decade, how would you describe the demographic and culture you would like to see represent Cottage Grove?
How would I like to see the demogra, demographics be?
Demographic and culture, yes.
I would like to see Cottage Grove include as many people as, as it could demographically. You know, people that are looking for asylum, people that are, um, we don't have that much of a Native American population here, I don't think at all. I don't know. But, you know, I don't, I don't think that we should exclude anybody. I think Cottage Grove should be as welcoming as possible for anybody that wants to move here. I can't give you a number on, we need X and numbers. I can't do that.
Counselor Irvin.
And why do you think that you are competent to be a city councillor?
Well, I've been to a lot of city council meetings when I was down in Crestwell. I understand how the city works. I understand not the nuances, but public meeting laws, public, uh, information, request for information. So I kinda have a, there are areas that I would have to, you know, get up to speed on, but it's not something that I would be coming in here blind as. I understand that everybody's on a committee besides the, the council, um, so you're, there's a parks advisory board. I, again, I haven't read the charter, so I don't really know all of those places, but I look forward to, to learning those.
Counselor Mary Day.
Summarize your priorities for the city for the present and particularly for the future.
Personally, I would like to see the city of Cottage Grove look at, um, light industrial in town, maybe a tech center of some type. Not necessarily a call center, but something that's actually produced here, made here. I would like to see more low-income housing, you know, because we have a nunn house problem here. And, um, I don't have a magic bullet or the, the magic idea on how to fix that, but I think that we need to start looking at those issues a little, and I, and not that you guys aren't, but, um, in maybe a more creative way, I don't know, with partnership from the, and I don't know whether you get it from the federal government or not, but somehow to, um, you know, so light industrial, um, and I'd also like to see, uh, an issue with policing here. I know that we've had an incident here and there's just been a real tragic one in Nashville. I believe that's where it is. And, you know, there's gotta be something that the city can do to fix that. I mean, I mean, they're our employees, right? Yeah, okay, so we need to do a better job with them. And I don't know whether it's more education, um, better, um, oversight, better management. I don't know what the answer is to that. It's, but, you know, it's real tragic and I hope, I don't wanna ever have, see that again happen here and, and. And I hope, I don't want to ever have, see that again happen here in Cottage Grove.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. We really appreciate you coming out tonight.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Scott.
Hello, Mayor Salisbury. How are you?
Great. That's your spot. Okay, so what we're doing tonight is we're going around and each councillor is going to ask a question one at a time. And we're giving every candidate about a minute to answer, but if you want to take longer, you're welcome to. Everyone kind of has been. And we are going to start with Councilor Mary Day.
Well, hello, Councilor Mary Day.
Hi, and welcome.
Thank you.
What would you consider the most important issues that pose a challenge to the city currently and over the next 10 years?
Infrastructure and police services, and probably water treatment, the water treatment plant that might come into play.
Thank you. Councilor Savage.
Thank you, Mayor Salisbury, and thank you so much for coming tonight. You've given us some of your background and your application. And through discussion, what do you feel are the strengths that you can bring to this council?
I, I've been very out in the community over the past several years, and I think the majority of you councillors have seen me in the community, participating in various events. As you know, I'm a meteorologist. I put up a couple of weather stations here in town. Like to get the community involved, and I do weather reports on KNND. Last year, I directed the Bohemia Mining Days Festival. It was a very successful festival, and feedback was that it was the most successful in recent memory. It was a challenging time for Bohemia Mining Days, and I pulled it off. Got a successful leadership team, worked well with everybody. We had zero problems, but tons of fun by the community. So I, I think, rather than going into other details about myself, I, I think my abilities and leadership skills hopefully have, came to the forefront prior to myself coming in here through what I've done in the community thus far. I am cool, calm, and collected, I think. I'm things through. I'm thorough, and I have a personality that I can get along with anybody.
Councilor Flack.
Thank you. What role or roles do you think city government should fill?
Can you elaborate on that?
You know, we just asked the same question to everybody, and if I kind of helped you along, that probably wouldn't be fair.
Okay, okay. So can you repeat, can you repeat the question?
So, so what role or roles do you think city government should fill?
The city has to take care of the city. The city has to take care of the infrastructure and do what's right for the best interests of both the citizens and the city itself. There has to be a balance. That balance is challenging. People are not going to always agree with how the government functions in the city, but you have to get beyond those misperceptions from the citizens and be transparent and operate in such a manner, as I previously mentioned, that fulfills taking care of the city, keeping the city afloat and in a positive direction, and moving forward with the citizens.
Thank you. Could you support an increase in water billing in Cottage Grove if the data showed the need for the increase to cover the cost of the operating system?
Absolutely. I toured the water and waste treatment plants, and I saw how antiquated some of the systems are. I was actually very impressed with how clean the water is in Cottage Grove with the membranes and so forth in place and the thorough explanation that the city employees gave and that they gave. I was very impressed with that. But it was very clear, too, that it's ailing and that there's going to need to be investment in infrastructure for that. So I do support that. It's going to be a major challenge with the community, but that's where the misperceptions come in. You've got to be very clear, transparent, and involve the community, whether it be doing some sort of a video tours, just something that would work out where the citizens know, look, we understand that the water bills are high, or at least that's how it's perceived, but here's what we need to do. So here's the alternative if we don't do it, and we have to maintain city infrastructure. So to answer your question, yes.
Thank you. Councilor Senate.
What do you feel are the strengths and weaknesses of the current city council? And how would you contribute to improving the council?
I'm, I'm not going to go into the strengths and weaknesses of, of the current council. We have a brand-new mayor, we have a brand-new councillor, and I don't think it's fair to both of them to delve into that with my, with my thoughts on that. What I can contribute, however, is my leadership skills, working well with others, and team player, finding a common ground. I don't take disagreements personally. I understand that at times councillor, as a councillor, you're not going to all agree on the same issue, but you've got to work through the issue together. And I think the most important thing is to show the city that council is unified, excuse me, dry air, that council is unified and restore trust in the city government through the community.
Councilor Urban.
Have you read the budget and the charter?
I, a couple, actually, not a couple of years, about a year ago, I glanced over it. Yes, sir.
And the city code?
Yes.
Councilor Mary Day.
Sometimes people are very angry about an issue before city council. How do you handle people who are angry?
You're never going to please everybody. You have to do what's best, what's in the best interest of the city and balance that to what's in the best interest of the citizens. If you don't take care of the city, the city's going to fall. And if you don't take care of the city, just because you want to appease all of the citizens collectively, the city's going to fall. So you have to make some very tough decisions, unfortunately, as a city councillor. I recognize that. I understand that. But you also can't argue with people, and, and you've got to keep your ears open. You've got to listen, acknowledge, respect the citizens' opinions, and do your best to be transparent and clear up any misperceptions. And I think that's a big thing that, that I've seen in Cottage Grove, just because I live here, and I'm sure it exists in all other cities across the country, is that there's a misperception when it comes to city government and then the citizens. So you get sometimes rumors spread, sometimes you get misinformation, or you get the correct information misinterpreted differently. But whatever it is, there's a lot of misperception out there. And that just seems to rile people up, and, you know, times now are more changing, you know, than three years ago because of COVID and so forth and the issues surrounding that. So we're more in a challenging position to work with the citizens and overcome misperceptions. And again, I had, that happened to me with BMD. There was a lot of disagreements, you know, with some people, and we worked it through. We overcame it, and that's what you've got to do, and you can't take it personally. You cannot take it personally. You've got to just work with the people and be transparent. And, and, you know, some, you're just never going to make everybody 100% happy. Sometimes you've got to just say, okay, you know, I've done my part. This is how it is. I'm sorry that you disagree. Duly noted.
Councilor Savage.
Thank you so much, Mayor Salisbury. What do you want to achieve as a city councillor?
I want to be part of the very difficult process that you have lying ahead of you to rebuild and restore trust and faith in the community. I think that's number one right now, because there's a lot of challenges ahead. We have issues with the police department. We have a downtown remodel, so to speak, renovation. There, there's other things that are undoubtedly going to be coming up. And, and I think first and foremost is, is that the council needs to show that they are united. Not necessarily united on their own individual opinions, but they're united as a team and that they function as one body. And, and the community understands that, okay, well, if the council voted this way, and even though I don't agree with it, I understand and I trust my city council that they're going to make the right decision for me. And that's important for me. It's important for me, and that's why I applied and took advantage of this opportunity to present myself before you. Because I, I think it's, we're in a, we're in a time right now where it's extremely important with perception and doing what we can to bring the community together and to restore faith in the community with the city government.
Councilor Flack.
Thank you. Let me see. If you had to choose between closing the library or laying off two police officers, what would you do?
Close the library. We cannot compromise public safety, period. And that's been proven that crime is increasing. We cannot compromise public safety.
Thank you. How do we get more citizens of Cottage Grove involved in their government to ensure it meets their needs and expectations?
We have to, as a council, trust has to be rebuilt. That's, that's first and foremost. If, I believe that if the community sees that there is a united council and, and that they're moving forward and getting things done and making progress, that opens the door to involve the community. And once the community sees that, I think, in general, there's a way to involve the community in more activities and reverse what's been happening over the past several years.
Thank you. Councilor Senate.
Over the next decade, how would you describe the demographic and culture you would like to see represent Cottage Grove?
You know, that's a hard one. There's so many issues at hand right now. There's the homeless issue. There's the mental health. There's the drug issues. There's unemployment. We're probably walking into a recession, so this may not be a good year overall. We don't know. Regarding the demographics, I, I don't, I don't know how to answer that. I mean, that, that's a, that's a difficult question that you really need a crystal ball for. But I, I will say that council needs to address, or continue addressing, the issues of homelessness and unemployment really isn't a big part that, of what city council can do, other than the fact of attracting more businesses into town and tourism and so forth to make downtown thriving. But I, I, I think we, I think we need to take care of our infrastructure first and take care of the problems at hand first before that issue gets addressed. That's my answer.
Thank you. And why do you think that you are competent to be a city councillor?
My leadership skills, as I said before, I, I think out of the box. I'm cool, calm, and collected. I like to be thorough, think things through. I like to study and learn about what I'm getting myself into. So if there's an issue that is upcoming before the council, I would certainly research and get more involved in the issues that I have a competent understanding to make a competent and adequate decision at the meeting. You've seen my character around town on, on what I do, that, in that I'm very community-oriented. I ran or operated BMD last year, and I know that's just one event and just a small snapshot of my character and so forth. But I think it speaks mountains that it was pulled off successfully and overcame a lot of the problems and challenges that were occurring within BMD. And also pulling together the community and, and challenges that were in the community. And we pulled it off. I saw people from different points of views getting together and, and sitting and talking and so forth and having a smile on their face. And to me, that meant, that meant everything. So my, my talent in that area, my ability to work with people, my personality, my character. I'm a person of good moral character. I'm invested here in Cottage Grove. I'm, I'm staying here. I'm going to retire here. I, I just want to see the success of the city, and I want to be part of that and, and have my input in city council.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out tonight.
That's it.
We appreciate it. You're done.
Flew by like 10 seconds. Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Mary Day, Councilor Savage. Thank you, Councilor Flack, Mayor Salisbury. Thank you, and congratulations. Councilor Senate, thank you. Councilor Urban, thank you. And City Recorder Roberts, thank you.
Can I start by offering one question, one point? Question 20 has to be changed. Every single person that received it did not catch that it was talking about representation on the council as opposed to in the community. And so that needs to be reworded, because that was obviously not a clear question. So notes for, notes for the future.
It says on, in Cottage Grove, Cottage Grove.
Represent. Represent. So, so we need to rewrite that question, for sure.
Absolutely. Okay. I did, too. All right. Councilor Savage.
Thank you, Mayor Salisbury. How do you want to move forward? You had mentioned that you want to have discussion first. Do you want to talk about each applicant, or do you want us to kind of name our top three?
Yeah, I would say, go ahead and tell me, tell us all who we're impressed with. See who overlaps. Yeah, and then we'll see, and then go from there. Councilor Mary Day.
I was overall impressed by all the candidates. I thought we were blessed to have such a wide spectrum of, of people willing to step up to the plate. I was impressed primarily by the three candidates that really showed knowledge and understanding of the role of government and had a lot of experience locally. And those were Chris Holloman, Alex Dreher, and Don Rust.
Councilor Savage.
Yeah, thank you so much, Mayor Salisbury. Gosh, I feel like I just wrote notes after notes after notes. And I really appreciated everybody taking the time for coming out tonight. I was really impressed with Alex Dreher, I'm not going to say that right, Dreher?
Dreher.
Dreher, thank you so much. Don Rust and Scott Borghioi. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I, you know, it's, I want to say what a wonderful process this is, because just hearing the different thoughts, you know, allows us to gain some, some insight into, you know, what other community leaders are thinking. And so I want to.
And so I want to thank everybody for coming out. As far as my top three, interesting enough, in the interview process, Alex Dreher really rose to the top for me, had a lot of knowledge and information about what we were doing. Garland is, you know, probably right up there with me because I know him so well. You know, it's not always how you interview per se, but, you know, and it's funny because those of us who've worked with him for many, many years know he has kind of a dry wit, which sometimes doesn't necessarily translate. But the years of working with him and his knowledge really put him in there. And I would say my third, or of the top three, Don Rust would be in there as well.
Counselor Stenning.
You're not going to go? Thank you. Again, thanks to everyone for coming out. It takes guts to do this, to put your hat in the ring and to commit to this kind of work that's sometimes quite thankless. I would agree largely with the sentiment that we would be well-served by any, if not all, of these candidates. I would say the three that rose to the top for me, I was very impressed with Alex Dreher, not only a depth and breadth of knowledge about what the city does and could do, but also being very solution-forward. I noticed that at just about every turn. My other top two would probably echo Councilor Mary Day with Chris Holloman and Don Rust.
Well, I have a similar sentiment. And while we were interviewing, I was thinking, man, we could have like even an advisory committee, sub-advisory committee to the council and reflecting on, man, there's some great ideas. There's all these perspectives. And so, you know, I was a little bit distracted with that thought, like, how do we form that up and invite? So thank you, everybody, for coming out and interviewing. For me, it narrowed down to the top two being Alex and Chris.
Well, I knew this was going to be a hard process tonight when I read all the applications. And we've got a lot of very qualified applicants. However, I did come into this thinking that if it was on a pretty even playing field for several candidates, last time we appointed somebody, you remember Chalice, I said, when somebody makes the effort to run, I think that that should stand. And I would carry that even further because this time between Councilor Mary Day and Chris Holloman, I think that was the closest race in Cottage Grove history that I know of. And so obviously, two very popular candidates with our citizens. And I also know that he got only 25 votes less than Councilor Fleck. And so I have to stand on, yes, there's some great people out there, but especially this go-around, it was a very difficult run this time because it was the, probably the worst that I've seen as far as, you know, some hurt feelings out there. And Mr. Holloman did stand up and make a very heartfelt speech that I think kind of struck us all. And with that, I have to stand by Chris Holloman.
That's one. Do you go to three?
Oh, no. Yeah, I'm Chris Holloman.
Thank you. I was kind of hoping to stay on the positive and hope that we ended up with, you know, a clear leader. I cannot support in any fashion Chris Holloman. And I'm really sorry because I like Chris. I used to work with Chris in my former job. I like him immensely, but he chose to run as an adversary. You know, his slogan said he wasn't a good old boy, that there was a platform to get rid of the city manager. And I'm really sorry because I just cannot support that. And I don't think that bringing that in at this time is going to benefit this council. And so that is my one absolute person I cannot support in this position. I'm really sorry to say that, but I have to be honest about what I think is best for our city and for this council. And right now, anyway, I would hope that we could work in the future together and settle some of those differences. But this last election cycle was very unfortunate, and I'm sorry, I cannot support you.
I have to clarify, I never once heard him say that he wanted to get rid of the city manager. So that's a pretty steep thing to say.
I didn't hear that either. I'm curious if that's...
You never said that.
Well, I apologize if I'm incorrect, but that was my understanding from what I'd... So we're not actually in public comment here.
And the slogan was not, just so you know, part of the good old boys' club. It's, I am not part of a club. So, you know, I just, it's a standalone, I'm my own person thing. So, do you want to give your top pick?
Counselor Savage.
Oh, thank you so much. In all fairness, you know, I really want to break the tension and support somebody who hasn't necessarily ruffled feathers. I would really motion to appoint Alex Dreher and see where we go with that.
Second.
Thank you. I think Mr. Dreher is the obvious choice. I'd be proud to support her, and I would think we did a great thing for our community.
Can you unpack that maybe a little bit more, the weighing, the value of having community support and representation versus the ruffling of feathers idea, where that weighs out?
So I think what we need as a council is unity. And I think that there are so many differences of opinions that there is perception of weighting the council. And I think that we should appear united and really support each other and go with somebody who is really going to create that diversity between us and not appear as weighted.
And my opinion is, is we have great diversity up here. And I think we need balance. And we don't have that right now. And just like I supported you, Chalice, I'm the one that nominated you because you ran. The other person you're supporting did not run this time around. And I think there should be great weight in somebody that put themselves out there and ran and is obviously qualified. So I completely disagree with what you're saying. Although I respect Alex's work on paper, I've personally never met Alex, and I've been very involved in the city. And I'm not taking anything away. But, you know, where I stand with, you know, that I think it's really important to at least get out there and run. Put yourself out there. Like I said, this was a very difficult run this time around. And a lot of things that were said and the perception was put on Mr. Holloman that did not come out of his mouth, which is very unfair. And the same thing happened to you when you ran, and I defended you too. And so to hear you say that he ruffled some feathers, I have to say, people would have said that the other way.
To clarify, I never said he ruffled feathers. I just said there were ruffled feathers.
There's always going to be ruffled feathers in our community on city council. And sometimes you have to be willing to ruffle some feathers because you're trying to do the right thing, and people are not always going to agree with you.
You're absolutely correct. Counselor Fleck.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to reiterate, I actually really liked Mr. Holloman when we worked together in the past. And I'm not saying I could never work with him. I'm just saying that this last year's been brutal. It's been very contentious. It's been very hard. And we're on a very unstable platform. And I think introducing an element that can downgrade the way this council works together is not worth it at this time. In a couple of years, when elections come around, I am hopeful that we can actually run campaigns that are positive, that aren't a group of folks trying to, you know, change the direction and coming out, you know, on the other side. I love some of the thoughts and the ideas that came out of that process, but I also know that this body needs to be cohesive, and we don't have to agree. I mean, I'm not suggesting that I need somebody that agrees, but we need to have a good working relationship. We need to have the mutual respect to be able to, after that vote, as was mentioned earlier, be able to go outside and shake hands, you know, and not hold hard feelings. And my fear is that because this last year's been so bad, that if we go down that road, that we're asking for more trouble.
See, and I think you are taking this personally. I think this is a personal opinion. And I still stand by...
But we'd love to hear from, like, I have a perception on this of like, well, you keep the balance. The balance is weighted favorably to those who may have made the motion with the work that's been put in and the efforts in that direction. So it does seem like a pivotal time to keep a majority opinion, to keep everything moving in that direction, and that there can be a tolerance of a difference of opinion as long as it doesn't switch the vote. So that's what I'm actually hearing. Is that accurate?
I'm not sure.
Can you maybe distill what you...
Clarify that, please.
You're hearing a...
I'm hearing, well, what I heard was, we need to keep, we can have disagreement as the part I'm filling in, as long as it doesn't topple the direction that we're headed. We don't, we absolutely want to stop course correction. And there's a lot at stake. There's been a lot of investment.
Oh, okay, I can comment on that. I actually could care less about one vote, even important votes. It's not about individual votes or course correction. This is about folks who are going to represent the council from an independent position that are going to weigh it based on what's best for our citizens and, as that one question that was so poorly written, represents the community. And I just, you know, and I'm not trying to get into some sort of adversarial role with you guys. That's exactly what I'm trying to not do. And that's why I'd hope that somebody else would have risen to the top so we wouldn't have to have this conversation. But, you know, there are things that you do and don't do if you're politically savvy. You don't run for office and candidates, you know, that are running against other folks that you may sit with. I mean, there's been some real missteps in this last year. And I, gosh, I'm the first to admit, you know, I lost my temper a couple of times over the last year. It's been really tough. But what we need are folks that are going to help us build that rapport. And if the votes go in my favor or not, well, I'm as independent as they get. And I'm certainly not going to vote differently than I feel is right. And I would expect anybody in that seat's going to do the same. And that's, I guess, where I'm coming from. Does that help clarify a little bit?
Thank you. I'm wanting to just listen mostly.
I feel that this, like I said, this was such a close race, and the citizens of Cottage Grove have spoken. And it would be literally a slap in their face if Chris Holloman is not appointed to this seat, especially, Chalice, he got more votes than you did this time around, and you were elected to your seat. And I don't mean that in a derogatory way. I'm just saying he was very popular with the citizens.
I don't disagree with you. I really adore Chris personally. I think he's an amazing human. But in all honesty and all transparency, when I read that comment at the bottom of his application, that sounded like entitlement. It didn't sound like somebody who worked hard to get here. That sounded like somebody who's entitled to be here. And that doesn't feel good on the council either. And primarily, that's why I didn't pick him, was that statement alone. It's not a standalone, it's a comparison.
That's interesting because I could see why he would feel entitled to a council seat after a run like that. So I definitely disagree with that. I think that, I love Greg's idea about advisory committees to the council and having some of these great candidates on those. And I just think Chris Holloman has earned this seat. And literally, it would be a travesty, honestly, if he was not appointed. I mean, just under that same precedent that you were appointed. And I'm very surprised that you wouldn't feel the same way. But that's your opinion. But it does surprise me after being alongside you when you went through it.
Counselor Stenning.
Thank you. I haven't known Mr. Holloman for a long time. I like what I know about him. He ran a spirited race in the fall. I don't know what he intended to do necessarily as a councillor, or what he didn't, or what's been put into his mouth, or what hasn't. I think probably a lot of that was a lot of people's speculation and telling themselves and others a story. Again, I don't know the extent of that, and we maybe never will. And I don't think we have to. The thing that I'm looking at here is that I think Alex Dreher is the best candidate regardless. I was blown away by her. I was tempted to give her my seat. I think we have someone that I'm proud to support, and that's about as far as it needs to go. So that's kind of where I'm at.
Yeah, and for me, I don't have a lot of experience with Chris, and I have no experience with Alex. I was very impressed with Alex. I think she would serve well, as I do with Chris. So for me, I put them, I don't know what the equal would be because I don't know what the balance would be of what could be contributed versus not. But I, man, I am wondering, since I have them fairly equal, how, well, you guys have explained, it's a concern over unity or the idea of unity on the council. For me, I guess I hadn't factored in that that was going to be an issue. And so I would have tilted the scales to the one that had put in the work and the effort and had gone through. I was left with the question, why, you know, why didn't Alex run in this last, very well-qualified, probably would have won?
Does she live in Ward 3?
Is there, oh, is it a Ward issue?
Well, it was a Ward 7 winner.
Yeah, there was no...
Ward 4.
Oh, my word. So that's why I would tilt this. Like I said, I can't vouch for what would be done, how the council would look. I mean, we don't know that with any of them, honestly. So that's where I'm arriving at my idea, my support.
Counselor Stenning.
I think if the second-place vote getter was going to be appointed, we would have done that with Chalice before we went through an interview process. I think we would do that with Mr. Holloman before we did this process. I kind of think, and I question the need for the process if that's what we were going to do. We didn't do that, and we did this. I think we have to look at the outcome of what we've done here tonight and choose accordingly.
Well, I went into it with that, that if candidates were equal in my eyes, or one was a little more weighted, it would be the person that put the effort in. And so, just like I did.
Counselor, Mary Day, do you have?
Counselor, Mary Day, do you have...
I'm in a rather difficult position because Chris and I sought the same seat. I was very impressed by Alex, particularly with her ability to understand the grant process and be privy to steering money our way as a government employee, and that impressed me greatly, as did all of her answers.
Call the question?
Call the question?
That means we need to vote.
All right. Well, the recorder, please call the roll.
Counselor Mary Day?
Counselor Savage?
Aye.
Counselor Fleck?
Aye.
Counselor Stenning?
Aye.
Counselor Urban?
We don't get to qualify our vote, do we? I mean, I support Alex. I don't see anything at issue. And if that's the vote, then I...
Mayor Solzby?
Yeah. I'm with Greg, I guess. There's no... So I...
We're still in the meeting.
So, the motion is passed. We do have a meeting Friday morning, 8:30, training meeting. So possibly the first question that you need to ask your new council candidate is, can she make it to the training meeting at 8:30 in the morning on Friday? Kind of short notice, but we just want to remind you of that, and that's all your business you have tonight.
Alex, can you make it to the meeting on Friday?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want to adjourn?
I'm sorry?
Adjourn.
It's adjourned.